Welcome, the Wichita Board of Education Special Meeting of August 29th is now in session. We appreciate everyone viewing on in person or viewing the broadcast. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, public hearing on the 2022-23 budget.
Do we have the presentation first or ask if there's any speakers?
I believe the presentation will come first, and then if there are any speakers, they can ask questions relative to the presentation.
We will proceed then with Susan. And Addie.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, Vice President Hedrick, members of the board. I'm Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, and with me tonight I have the architect behind the budget, our Budget Director Addie Lowell, and she leads a fantastic team of financial gurus who put together this budget over the past year. I think you could look at our budget timeline, and it's been a good year of work on her staff. So certainly I brought her to answer any questions the board would have before we get to the adoption recommendation, but also to recognize her team and her efforts through this course. So we want to run through a few slides tonight to recap really the last seven months of the journey we've taken related to the fiscal year 23 budget to provide a little bit of additional clarification and some official minutes requirements as required under House Bill 2567. So let's just start there. Under that sub for House Bill 2567, as we've covered in the, at the August 8th meeting in depth, there are requirements that the minutes in which we adopt the budget, we must reflect a few facts. So I want to recap the facts for the purpose of the minutes. First of all, needs assessments were conducted by every attendance center. Those needs assessments were accumulated into a book, and we sent the Board of Education members a book via US Mail the week of 7/11. In addition, we also had some instruction provided to each board member as to kind of the foundational information contained in those needs assessment. What information was collected centrally, what information was completed by building principals, and how all of that information came together per school. And then on 8/8 at that board meeting, we covered the major findings and themes in those needs assessments, how the district was addressing those needs in the budget, and we provided the opportunity for some discussion and asked if the Board of Education had any changes in our allocation method. And at that time, there was no recommendation for changes. Is that an accurate reflection of what we, of work we have done to date?
Good job.
Okay, thank you. We also shared that we, understanding that those needs assessment were done in May, we know that that, that, based on what principals knew in May versus the students in front of them now, needs change. So we shared that schools and programs do have some flexibility in their direct allocations to make modifications to their own budget plans based on the students in front of them. And centrally, we also can make adjustments for unexpected enrollment shifts or emergency situations. The point there was we can do anything, but we cannot do everything because our wants, needs, and now the barriers that we're going to kind of refresh the board's memory on in just a minute, tend to eat up very quickly our resources. And the resources are not strictly financial, but they are also in terms of time, human capital, and our ability to influence. There were three questions that the board answered in relation to the requirements in the sub for House Bill 2567, and we wanted to recap those as well tonight. The first question, what barriers must be overcome to have all students achieve proficiency above Level 2? And we categorized those in kind of major theme categories per student, per staff, per family, and per community. And under each one of the major headings, obviously there's a lot of sub reasons that a student might not do well on a state assessment test. Poverty is kind of the big umbrella category. And we asked the board at that August 8th meeting if that summary accurately reflected the barriers, if there was anything the board wanted to add or change, and I believe this list reflects kind of the final list, at least for this year. This will be ongoing work year over year from this point forward. The question two was what budget actions, recommendations, or reallocation should be taken to address and remove barriers? And we did provide some explanation to the board as far as actions we did take based on the needs assessments and some of those barriers, particularly as we were allocating ESER into schools and projects and programs. We did share that many of those barriers are not necessarily solvable, if you will, with budget action. Some of them require community support, some of them require parents and families, some of them require some staff change, change in approaches, just a lot of things that will come into effect, the improvement on a state assessment. But that we did take some allocation, especially of ESER funds, into those key areas and key themes, if you recall, of mental health, there was technology, there was facilities, those kind of big category items. And then finally, question number three, if budget actions are implemented, estimate amount of time to take, it will take for all students to achieve proficiency above a Level 2? And after some discussion, the board landed on kind of two goals. The first one being that 50% of the students perform, will perform at Levels 3 and 4 by 2030, and that the second part of that would be that the students that are performing at Level 1 would increase between 1 and, getting out of Level 1 between 1 and 5% annually. And we thought those were at least an achievable goal, a place to start as we kind of move through improving our processes over the next few years related to this needs assessment and state assessment question process that has been developed. So I will pause there to see if there are any questions about that summary on the needs assessment and state assessment pieces. We were going to try to get Level 1 students out of Level 1 between 1 to 5% annually over that same period of time. Okay, so these next few slides you've seen, I'll probably run through those pretty quickly. This is our proposed budget, net budget, all funds. This is after transfers. Our original budget in fiscal year 22 was $976 million. We are proposing maximum budget authority going for fiscal year 23 at $981 million, an increase in budget of almost $5 million, which is really a .5% increase. But again, remember this, the, these past two years are budgets that are being significantly impacted by federal relief funds. That's why the dollars are so high. If, if not for those funds, we would be down into kind of that normal 700 to 800 million dollar point. So we are really seeing the impact of federal dollars still and will again for next year as well. Recalling that we showed you that budget allocation, that that, again, the federal grants are far the largest part of our budget for fiscal year 23, and then that followed by special education, secondary education, and elementary education. And then from there on, you have kind of those following funds that we talked about. But that that overall budget, from an operating perspective, puts 86% of the budget directly in support of students. And we shared our, kind of our updated circle wheel. And then we shared the, the chart of where our mill levy projections had landed. We shared where we were at the end of fiscal year 22. We shared what we sent to Sedgwick County as far as the revenue neutral rate, and then we shared where our proposed budget ended up. And again, the, the challenge of the process for, for school districts in particular is that we're, our budget is impacted by so many moving pieces that are not in our possession until either late June or early July. It's very difficult for us to get kind of finalized mill levy numbers to the county that might not have some adjustments when we actually get through that first pass of the budget forms. I don't know how we would change the calendar to make that work better for us. I, I know that, that the pieces that we're missing are not within anyone's control to change their calendars either, so it's just one of those, we have too many pieces that other people determine for us to necessarily say with, with, with certainty at, on July 15th, here's what we're going to do for sure. We, we do know enough where we can kind of set that maximum. We know we will not go over this month much, but again, our goal is to keep those mill levies as low as we possibly can. And that's, that's why we came in a little bit less than what we published because that is the goal. Anything you want to add there? You're good? Okay. Okay, what I did want to share is, is kind of a, this chart isn't one you haven't seen, and it's becau, and it's because we don't really, we have not really discussed a lot the impact of the general fund, primarily because we don't control the mill levy. That's a statutory item. So generally, I don't have a tremendous amount of conversation about it because you can't change it, right? It's not, it's 20 mills. However, because it's been included in some of the percentage increase information that's been, you know, published by various sources, I did want to bring that in and then also cover some corrections that the county actually made late. So, and they had, had a little system glitch where that change in the exemption amount on, on your, your home property, which has been for years, the first $20,000 has been exempt from general, the general mill levy for a long, long time. This past legislative session, they increased that to 40,000, but those statements that they, that the county mailed out were mailed out with the $20,000 exemption still in place. They did not reflect the 40,000. So again, no blame at all. That was, I can't even imagine the undertaking it took for Sedgwick County to try to get all that information out for all those different entities and cities and townships and school districts. That was a huge lift. So again, and really the first mailing that they did, they knew it was coming, obviously, but it, it's a lot different knowing it's coming and then making it happen. So again, they had, they'll, they'll improve their process, kind of like we improve our processes year over year. They have, there was some pieces that we wanted to share with the board as far as some examples related to that correction. So really, the general fund with that change is already less than revenue neutral. So at their 20 mills, they will only raise 56 point, almost 56.9 million dollars when the old revenue neutral would have raised 57.7 million dollars. So that general fund actually is going to help over all USD 259 taxes compared to the other pieces of our mill levy. So again, I'm going to show you an example of how this works. So here, and again, this is a slide we're going to spend a little time on, we'll spend a little time on the next two, and then we'll kind of wrap this up. So in our sample home of $100,000, in fiscal year 22, the mill levy assessed was 52.514 from USD 259. That includes all the components, the general fund, the LOB, special liability, capital outlay, bond and interest. That raised 557 point, point 90, $557.91. That's how much a taxpayer paid related to the USD 259 on $100,000 home. Going into fiscal year 23, had there been no assessed valuation growth, that same mill levy would have raised the same amount of money under the old rules, right? Because that's, that's flat mill levy, right? That's, that's kind of what the county and city have done historically. They don't change their mill levy, and then whatever the, your assessed valuation grows, then that becomes part of their next budget. That's just historically been their process. Under the new rules, that same $100,000, so again, no assessed valuation growth at this point, but that $20,000 exemption increasing to $40,000, that same mill levy from fiscal year 22, had we carried that into fiscal year 23, the taxpayer would only have had to pay $535.28. They would have had a reduction in their tax bill from USD 259 simply because of that increased exemption on their home. What USD 259 has done is in addition to that 20 mill impact, the 20, going from $20,000 exemption to 4, $40,000, we decreased the mill levy. So we did capture a little bit of the growth, but that $535, we, we went to $536 and some change. So really, we're talking a very small amount of money that, that our mill levy change captured related to that 100, which is now at 106,000, 106,000. So we had that assessed valuation improvement in that that's, we're looking at the far right column now, in, in our mill levy as proposed with the average growth in Sedgwick County of homes, that 106,250 home with our proposed mill levy will cost the taxpayer $536.97 had we stayed flat, we would have only been a dollar less because of just, that's the impact of that general fund change. So what I want to show you is a couple of very specific examples of their whole tax impact, right? Because it's easy for us to say, well, that's just USD 259, but there are other taxes, right? So I kind of wanted to show you an actual home. This is actually over near AMAC, one of my staff lives there and shared her statement with me. So this is, this is true factual information. Her appraised value on her home was 84,600. It increased 5%, so she had a 5% improvement in her assessed valuation. If you look at the, the, those last two rows of USD 259, you can see that had, the revenue neutral rate, again, under the, kind of the old rules, would have had it at 191.33 for the general fund. In the mailer that went out to her, it actually said $204.24 for the, for the general fund. With the correction, it's $112.24 because of her 88,800, she's only paying 20 mills on 48,800. So she's getting quite a bit of savings because of that change related to the general fund. That's, for the general fund alone, that's a 42% decrease because of that one change in the exemption rate. And then our other pieces, the ones that we control, would change her rate, it will increase 1.6%. So if you look at her taxes in totality, we, her total USD 259 taxes actually decreased over 15%, and because we're that far down, her overall property tax will decrease by 4.1%. So we're actually helping out the fact that Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita kind of maximize the growth on that level of house. Now, it changes, and I want, I took just the median, right? If you go out and Google, what's the median home value in Sedgwick County, it came back at 180,000, which is actually quite a bit, there's, that's been a big increase from just even in 2019 when it was 139. So that shows you that the major changes happening in assessed valuation over the past few years. So median value of a home, 180,000. We took kind of the average increase in assessed valuation, which was about 6.25%. So this, in our sample home, our new assessed valuation is 191,250. Even with that growth and that level of home, the general fund is still down 5.47%. Our taxes go up 2.86, the ones within our control. That, that is still a, very slight decrease. Essentially, you're flat at 191,250. And then that person's total property tax increase, including the city and the county taxes, would be 3.5% where our decrease is offsetting some of their increase. So above $191,000 homes, yes, they're going to feel our mill levy and the, the fact that that no longer will be decreased by the general fund. But you have to get to above median home value to have that happen. So any, I will pause there to see if there's any questions on those samples.
Susan, I had one. The, the revenue neutral rate concept was passed by the Kansas Legislature, correct?
That's correct.
And the Kansas Legislature assesses their property tax number, and I realize this exam, this example you gave us, it's a very small amount. It's, it's the rates 15, compared to ours anyway, it's very small, 15.32.
For Sedgwick County?
For Sedgwick County. Whether state, county, and city.
State, and right, state, right.
I'm talking about the state.
State piece is very small, correct.
The state did not do 100% revenue neutral either, did they?
No.
So, and I'm not saying they presented revenue neutral as a way to cut taxes, but they sure put a lot of burden on local governing bodies to be honest, and I, I agree with them on, on the honesty part, but it's been sold as this would create pressure to lower taxes, and yet the state, who passed the revenue neutral rate, did not even apply, didn't even apply that concept to their rate.
The state didn't change theirs.
Right, okay.
And, and yes, the, the, which, we talked about this just a week ago, which is the, the board didn't take, you know, an affirmative action to increase the mill levy in order to increase taxes. We decreased the mill levy, just not enough to offset the full increase of, of the appraised evaluation, the assessed valuation increase. It was, and, and that was, in some respects, we talked about this in June, it was purposeful because there are some areas of the budget, particularly capital outlay, that are impacted by inflationary pressures, just like everything else is impacted by inflationary pressures. We, we, and I will probably, every year that I'm in the seat, and Addie, as far as her recommendations related to the budget, will continue to recommend capital outlay because there are just so many needs related to our facilities, which on average are 60 years old, and we do have an obligation to upkeep them. We will continue to make that recommendation. But where we, where it makes sense for us to continue to capture some growth but give some relief in the form of mill levy reduction, where is, where we possibly can, we will continue under that, that methodology.
Julie, I got a second part of mine, and then I'll get you, and then Cheryl, Julie, Cheryl. And I appreciate your, your example of the, on the House because in the last week, I went back to my statement, and I was doing calculations on who did, made a greater effort to reduce the burden of the increased valuations. And my calculations, just on my home, of course, I don't have access to all the documents that the city of Wichita put in and the county put in, but it looked like we came closer to a revenue neutral rate than the city and the county did. It almost looked like, in my case, it almost looked like the increase that I'm going to see on the city and the county side of my proper taxes was offset by a good 5% at least on my own particular house to pay for the city and county's increase. It looked like they captured almost all of their property valuation increases.
So again, to be fair to them, they have a different funding structure than schools, right?
Right.
We, we're, we're, we get a state aid amount, we have federal aid, we have local. So our kind of three-legged stool of funding looks a little bit different for them, but certainly our reductions helped offset the fact that they stayed flat on their mill levy, capturing full growth, and we did not.
I see. That's, that, that was a better way of saying it than I did. Julie?
I just was going to reflect on Susan's comment that she was making about capital outlay and that, you know, we do need a little bit of an increase there because that is also where we saw needs in our needs assessment. And so if we're, since we are as a board concerned about those, those needs assessments and being concerned about the, the needs reflected there, those also really are primarily, a lot of those relate to capital outlay funds. Is, is that correct?
I'm going to let Susan respond, but then I'll respond.
Yes, that is, that's absolutely correct.
And I'm going to just add a little bit more meat to that. When you think about your safety services and all of the things that we've talked about that we want to do for enhancements there, that sits there as well. You think about your technology and your technology comprehensive plan where you're going to begin to continue those one-on-one devices that you want in the buildings to keep up with the technology, that also sits there as well. So that is a very important, not just for our facilities, but it also will, it keeps in the realm of safety as well as technology.
And then the only other comment that I just wanted to make was in your 191,250 value home, and the tax bill has raised slightly, but that family's assets has raised considerably, has raised by $11,000. So, you know, we're, we're concerned about increased valuation because we have to pay a little more tax, but in reality, if that family sold that house, they would likely make more money because that valuation is based on the increase of the value, value of their home in the today's market.
Right, there, there is, that, you know, we've obviously been on this kind of fairly significant increase in home values. Now whether we're kind of at the top and starting to kind of come down on it, especially with interest rates going up, I think we're starting to see a little cooling. So the 6.25% you see this year may not be that much next year, but certainly right now, the home values have been holding when you go to have that resale. It, that doesn't, doesn't help the fixed income person who may have, that, that, that is, again, and I, I have a retiree mother that is fixed income. So of course, when we talk about things that we're, as we're planning budget approaches, we, we talk about those things. This isn't something we, we don't have consideration. The board historically has taken that into account, but we have to weigh and balance that against, again, what's the mission, what are the strategic plan goals, what are we trying to accomplish, what are those needs, and trying to balance. And I think that that's what we've tried to do with this budget, but certainly if the board has, you know, some adjustments that they want to propose at this point, you know, we can, we can entertain something like that.
Cheryl?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much for your report, and, and I appreciate the synopsis of slides that we have seen before, but you've kind of put them in a new light. Mike, Mike, a couple of questions. First, on your slide about the corrected, corrected mill levies from the county, I just want to make sure that, that I heard you right and that I'm interpreting it correctly. Basically, the county, the original estimates that they were sending out, they were basing that on what they'd always done, which was the 20,000, and the legislature had passed that they could raise that to 40,000.
Correct.
And so the reason some of those numbers went cattywampus out in our community was because they were getting information from the county that was later corrected.
Correct. And, and the county, and I can't really blame them because it's a very expensive proposition to mail every property owner a statement, so they did not mail a corrected statement when they, when they found that, that, you know, computer issue, they did not mail out a corrected statement, primarily because the general fund can't be changed anyway, right? There is no action that the Board of Education can take to adjust the general fund.
Yeah, because it's the 20 mills.
Correct.
That were 20 mills, no matter what happens.
So they could, they, you could have speakers come and, and raise issues with the general fund, but there would be nothing the board could do about it.
Okay, my next question is on the, and I appreciate seeing three different values on homes. I think that gives us a clearer picture of what happens across our community. But, but when I look at the first one where it's the sample $100,000 home, which is kind of what typically is done across several budgets, we actually have gone down by a dollar and 60. dollar and 60, 69 cents. Is that correct?
From where they, so that, and I kind of want to make sure I understand the question. Fiscal year 22, so the first column on the left is what they paid in fiscal year 22. What we're proposing, including the general fund change, is the far right column. So really, that taxpayer will actually be better off by about $20.
Okay. Because I was subtracting the last two columns instead of the first and the last.
Right.
Okay, thank you. So that goes down, on the lower valued home, that definitely went down.
Yes.
And where we finally start catching up to it is when we get to homes that are valued 180,000 or more. And then we do have some increases.
Yes.
But we would have those increases even with the 20,000 would, I mean, that, that's typical, is it not, that the higher value of homes, they pay more taxes?
Yes. I mean, from a, you know, the, the district could have stayed revenue neutral, and we would have raised the same tax dollars. The impact over the, you know, whether that's low end or high end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, probably our lower end would have ended up paying more.
It's, yeah, it's a little hard, especially this year where we've had that change.
Right.
From the 20 to the 40, because though, definitely those lower income families with, with property values that are much less than the median are, are being benefited far more than the upper end.
Right. And, and typically, at least all the time that I've been on the board, we have always tried to lower our mill levy as much as we possibly could.
Correct. That's been the approach, especially in, since we have not, you know, we've not had to address a bond issue.
Right.
So then that kind of changes the conversation. We have to be perfectly, you know, honest about part of the reason we've been able to now start to come down is because while we still owe 277 million in bond and interest, that is now, year over year, going to be less and less, so we can start to really ratchet that down. But it's also been since 2008, since we've had a bond issue. It's been since, what, 17, 18, I think, since the last bond project was completed. The conversation around that particular issue is probably not too far off for this board.
Because we still have great needs.
Yes. Even with what we're doing with capital outlay, again, your safety initiatives, the technology expenses that are in, that are running through that fund, a lot of repairs and maintenance going on, not a lot of major structural improvements in the buildings. And again, with the age of the buildings.
Over 60 now.
Right. You've seen it at East High, and they're not inexpensive projects. We'll have, we'll have needs that we will have to kind of, and again, and also the dreaming, believing, and achieving. What do we want from our facilities for, in the future? Those are conversations that, that we should be having with, with our constituents.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
I don't have, you've been very, very clear, and I really appreciate it. About how many buildings do we have that are 100 years old approximately that we're still using?
We don't like to give numbers out in the public that are not accurate. So we can guess, but we won't do that. Let us get you some information about the ages of your buildings.
Well, my point was is that we've got some beloved buildings that are still in use. East High for one. And we, and even those that are not 100 years, but are still, like North High, we want to keep those and keep them up shape, and those are going to be coming up and needing some, some things in the future. So we can do this with dropping the mill levy this year, but in the future, we may just have to turn around and buy some very expensive repairs for some of our beloved buildings and maybe even build some new. Who knows?
I'm going to say this, we will, we will be very respectful to all of our buildings because they have rich traditions and we value them all. So I just want to make it clear that we are not discussing and having conversations about doing anything that, to any building. I just want to make that clear for those that are listening. We, we love our buildings. We just need to upkeep them and make sure that we're, we're loving on them.
Well, I've been by East High, and I'm just real impressed with that new entrance.
So again, just kind of finalizing then, again, we've shown you this chart many times. This was the historical look back on the mill levies. And then our highlights, and we've covered these with you before, I won't necessarily cover them again, you have them. And that remember, or a reminder for the board and obviously anyone who's listening is that all of our budgetary resources can be found online at usd259.org/budget. So our proposed budget is out there, our code 99 is out there, the needs assessment link is out there. Really, anything you'd want to know about the budgetary process can be found on that
Thank you, Susan. Oh, Kathy?
I want to just say thank you for all of the work that you guys did and all of the educating that personally that you've given me to try to understand this. And I'm so glad that there was an error in the community with that chatter, with that 6.4%, that that was a mistake, and you've made that very clear, and I feel very comfortable with everything that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think comments up here are concluded. We did have one speaker, but they withdrew, so I will, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the Wichita Board of Education on the 2223 budget? Only seeing staff, I kind of knew that answer, but still needed to ask that. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Finance, 202223 budget adoption.
Final comments and a motion.
I'm moved to second the budget.
Second?
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Julie to adopt the 2223 budget and, and the, approved the resolution, entitled resolution expression, the property tax policy of USD 259.
Oh, and Stan, please remember, the voting pads are functional.
Okay, okay, good. We can, we can, we can take the vote on the pad.
Okay.
Any, any other last discussion? A motion's on the floor? You may vote.
No, yours hasn't registered. Try again. Still not. Yes?
Over here.
Where? Did we go? Can I just raise my hand?
We may do that.
It's, you know.
Yeah, I was going to say, Kathy, before we expose our votes, how do you vote? Okay? Motion carries 7-0. The budget is now approved. Long process that we started, and actually will start tomorrow on the, on the 2324 budget.
You never get a break.
So, so there is no break on this. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous adjournment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Ernestine to adjourn. All those in favor? We're just going to raise our hand this time.
Make it easy.
Thank you.